Hey, good evening, everybody. It is four o'clock. I will call this meeting to order. This is a special meeting for our CIP and operating budget for the fiscal years 2025, 2026, and 2026, 2027. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Dynas.
Here.
Councilmember Diedrich.
Here.
Councilmember Temple.
Here.
Mayor Protem Carwin.
Here.
And Mayor Estrada.
I am here. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilman Diedrich, can you please lead us in the pledge, sir?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, Councilman Diedrich. Next, we're on our discussion item. Can I please call up Director Hickey to present the item? Hey, Director Hickey, good evening.
Good evening. Good afternoon. It was just, we don't have the screens on behind here, but I may have to look back a little bit. Okay, well, good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protem, council members, city staff, and members of the public. I'm Travis Hickey, CFO for the city, and it's my pleasure to be here to present the first portion of the workshop for the two-year budget covering fiscal years 25, 26, and 26, 27. So the preparation and adoption of the budget is a major undertaking and is only possible because of the many people with a hand in it. First, I'd like to thank the department heads and their analysts and staffs for their effort identifying critical requests to keep their departments running efficiently. And extra thanks to the Public Works and Community Services Departments for their work on the CIP portion of the budget. Secondly, I'd like to thank the Executive Office, including the City Manager, Assistant City Manager, and Deputy City Manager for their time to meet with each department, understand the overall needs of the city, and leadership in the overall direction of the budget. I also want to thank the City Council for their leadership in the budget process and for their final say in the budget adoption. Lastly, I want to thank the Finance Department for all of their efforts bringing all of the numbers together, with a special thanks to Deputy Finance Director Margarita Cornejo, Principal Accountant Dominic Tartaglia, Financial Analyst Lori Lockwood, without whose efforts we would not be here today with a proposed balanced budget. Keeping with the theme of the city honoring our hometown heroes, our budget process honors our budget heroes. Who, all of our city staff in every department who monitor the budget and think about the budget, and ways to work smarter and protect city resources. So I'm going to move quickly through the slides to make sure we have enough time for the CIP portion and questions, but feel free to stop me at any point. In preparing the budget, the foundation starts with the five strategic goals and priorities of the strategic plan. Each of the priorities is built into the department budgets to ensure that the city is moving forward in concert with the vision of the City Council and as manifested in the strategic plan. So here we have, hopefully you guys can see, can you see it on your screen? Okay, good. So here we have an executive summary of what we're going to cover in today's workshop. We will look at an overview of the process, including the timeline, public engagement, and ultimate adoption by the council. We will also talk about some economic factors driving the budget, the current condition of the national economy, potential impacts from tariffs, and resulting modest revenue growth is requiring the city to take a very measured approach to the budget. At the first CIP workshop in early April, I mentioned the city's financial condition is strong. So while there is a lot of uncertainty regarding sales tax, property tax, and development revenues, the city has positioned itself well to weather any downturns. We are anticipating revenue growth at about 4% over the two-year cycle. This is less than the 7% to 8% and 12% growth rates we've seen over the past four years. However, revenues are still growing. Many cities across California, and the United States in general, are facing budget deficits and proposing cuts to programs, and staffing is a part of their budget process, which we don't have here. As ranked by the California Policy Center for Local Fiscal Health, the city of Menifee scores a grade of A, ranking 23 out of 211 California cities, and number one in Southwest Riverside County, based on data reported for 2024. Under our City Council's leadership, the city has established a reserve of 40%, as well as separate accounts for long-term obligations like vehicle and equipment replacement, insurance, and pension liabilities, and construction of public facilities. So looking at the big-picture operating budget, the proposed spending plan recognizes the city's investment in and commitment to the city's workforce, resulting from the MOUs signed earlier this fiscal year. It also accounts for the city's commitment to the contracts for fire services and police department dispatching services, as well as general liability and workers' compensation costs, and unfunded mandates and obligations like the National Pollution Discharge Elimination System, or NPDES, permit program. So while restrained by revenue growth, the plan calls for strategic increases in staffing to deal with mandates, as well as meeting the growing needs of the maintenance districts funded through special district taxes. In the CIP budget, the focus is on maximizing funding by allocating to projects in which the city match can leverage larger funding opportunities, making use of developer contributions for public facilities, and committing funding for future projects. In total, the budget is recommending funding for $14.3 million for traffic relief and total road infrastructure over the next two years. Here we see the budget timeline. We have completed the two CIP workshops with the City Council, as well as held a meeting with the Quality of Life Measure D Citizen Oversight Committee on April 22nd. It is not noted on this slide, but there is also a meeting with the Planning Commission on May 14th to ensure that the proposed CIP projects are consistent with the city's general plan. The final budget adoption is scheduled for June 4th. Here we are looking at the planning and management aspects of the budget process. The budget planning talks about what got us here, and the budget management points talk about where we go from here. So planning involves projecting revenues and known increases in expenditures, reviewing the workforce, determining alignment with the strategic plan, meeting with departments, holding community engagement workshops, and considering the special revenue funds, revenues and expenditures, among other tasks. On the management side, the monitoring process takes over, tracking revenues and expenditures, goals and objectives, and looking out into the future. Community engagement also continues during the management phase in the form of preparing two mid-year reviews in February of '26 and '27, as well as the mid-cycle review, which will take place about this time next year. Given the current uncertainty over the city's major revenue sources, the city will be closely monitoring trends and will make budget recommendations outside of those normal reviews if it becomes warranted. This is the overall proposed operating capital improvement program budgets. The operating budget accounts for the daily operations, including capital outlays and equipment acquisitions, while the CIP budget contains funding for long-term capital improvements and facilities. The operating budget totals $129.1 million for fiscal year '25-'26, and $134.2 million for '26-'27. The general and quality-of-life funds account for $99.4 million and $103.9 million respectively of those totals. On the CIP side, the proposed budgets total $13.2 million and $14.3 million over the two years. The overall, and, I'm sorry, the overall operating and CIP budgets total $142.3 and $148.5 million over the two-year cycle. The revenue projections and analysis start first by looking at our economic outlook. Tariff policies and a decline in consumer confidence lead to greater levels of uncertainty with revenue projections. Interest rates have also held steady and are expected to remain elevated over the budget cycle. Unemployment rates also remain higher in California and Riverside County as compared to the national rate, and housing prices continue to rise. So looking specifically at the top five revenue sources for the general fund and quality-of-life funds, along with investment revenues, we anticipate increases across the board, except for a decline in development revenue for fiscal year '25-'26. In addition to understanding the economic outlook, the revenue estimates are formulated by trend analysis, data from the city's revenue consultants, and discussions with the city's development departments. Overall, general and quality-of-life recurring revenues are projected to increase at approximately $4.7 million for the first year of the budget. Another source of funding to provide resources to acquire critical one-time purchases is the fund balances of the city's internal service funds. Additionally, the special revenue funds provide much-needed resources for street and landscaping maintenance, street sweeping and lighting, and housing programs, among other purposes. On the right, we see a recap of the city's 40% general fund reserve policy, and we are pleased to present a budget that keeps that reserve balance intact. Other uses of fund include the set aside of $3.9 million for the new community center, and $1.2 million towards the McCall Boulevard I-215 interchange project. In addition to the use of the internal service fund fund balance, the proposed budget also calls for the use of development impact fees fund balance for the acquisition of high-priority vehicles. Finally, the budget calls for the use of restricted funds collected through the technology, general plan, and American medical response fees to cover the costs of eligible uses of those funds. Now we will dig into the general fund and quality-of-life budgets. In the middle of the slide, we see the combined general and quality-of-life budgets, including both operating and CIP costs, along with the planned use of fund balance. On the right, we see just the operating budget reporting a structurally balanced budget, with expenditure levels of $99.4 million for '25-'26, and $103.4 million for '26-'27. The operating budget is broken down into major categories of personnel costs, operating and maintenance expenses, and capital outlays and one-time costs. Personnel costs amount to $47.1 million and $49.5 million. Operating and maintenance expenses amount to $52.1 million and $53.7 million, and capital outlays and one-time costs amount to $215,000 and $715,000 over the two years. Here is a look at the departmental operating budgets for fiscal year '25-'26. The expenditures total $99.4 million, and like most cities, public safety comprises the highest percentage of the budget at just over 56%. The administration category includes the Executive Office, the City Attorney, Finance, Human Resources, as well as General Services. Here is a similar slide showing the fiscal year '26-'27 departmental budgets totaling $103.9 million. Again, these are just operating expenditures of the general fund and quality-of-life funds. Now we will narrow the focus to look at just the quality-of-life Measure DD fund. Consistent with the funding purpose of the measure, funds are used to increase public safety, enhance fire services, and improve infrastructure. Staff met with the Quality of Life Citizen Oversight Committee on April 22nd to review the proposed use of the funds. Consistent with prior years, funding is used to cover 35% of PD personnel costs, $1 million of the dispatch contract costs, approximately $13 million in fire contract costs, funding for three code enforcement personnel, and $2.5 million towards CIP projects, including $1.2 million to be set aside in reserves for the McCall I-215 interchange project. The committee also recommended $422,500 of existing funding from the Bailey Boulevard project to be reprogrammed towards the fiscal year '25-'26 AC resurfacing program. Here we see the details of the quality-of-life revenues, expenditures, and set asides consistent with what was presented to the Quality of Life Committee. The use of funds is consistent across all years presented, which includes the actuals for fiscal year '23-'24, the adjusted budget for '24-'25, and the proposed budgets for '25-'26 and '26-'27. The figures for fiscal year '24-'25 adjusted budget include the carryover of appropriations for multi-year CIP projects of over $17 million, including the Holland Road overpass and the new Fire Station 5 projects. The proposed budget also includes $125,000 for CIP projects in fiscal year '26-'27. However, we do anticipate that additional funding will be available for appropriations once the results for fiscal year '24-'25 are closed out. Like fiscal year '23-'24, during '24-'25, the city received one-time revenues from the Nova Battery project. These funds are anticipated to provide additional funding, which will be considered either at mid-year or the mid-cycle review. Now we'll shift away from the general fund and quality-of-life funds for a look at the citywide budget, including the personnel and operating expenditure requests.
Director Hickey, I have a quick question.
Yes, sir.
You mentioned the Nova Battery contribution, so that hasn't been previously allocated, is what you're saying?
No, it, the funds that were received from fiscal year '23-'24, the ones that went into the Measure DD fund have been allocated.
I'm sorry, the Nova Battery contribution?
Correct. So the, I'm sorry, there are a number of sources that were connected with the Nova Battery part. There was a benefit payment that was initially made at the start of the project that went in the city's general fund that the city can really use for any purpose that it chooses. That money has been committed sort of as security under a development agreement with Brookfield Properties, who is doing improvements along McCall Boulevard. The city is committed to repaying Brookfield for other developers' contributions towards that project. So they're doing the project upfront, but they're going to be reimbursed by the city, which ultimately will get those funds from other developers as the development comes in. So that money is sort of set aside until that development agreement plays out, but once that does play out, those funds are available for any purpose for the city to use. Separate from that, part of the development agreement with Nova Battery project was that when they buy equipment, it will be sourced to the city. And so by doing that, instead of the sales tax going to the company that they bought, to the city where the equipment was originally shipped out of, it's sourced to the city. And so there was about, it was a bit over $6 million received, yeah, yeah, about six, a bit over $6 million that was received during fiscal year '23-'24, and that was split equally, just over $3 million to the general fund, and $3 million to the Measure DD funds. And so that $3 million that came in for '23-'24 to Measure DD, that has been allocated, based on our meeting with the Oversight Committee and so forth. So we do, we have seen that money come in for '24-'25, but we need to get to the end of the year and close it out and see, you know, how the year finishes up before we do anything with those funds. But once we close out '24-'25, there's an additional amount. It was not quite $3 million, but it was, it was fairly, it was close to $3 million that we saw come in during '24-'25.
Okay, that's.
So it was like phase two of their project.
Yeah, thank you for the update. That second figure was what I was looking for there. Thanks.
Okay. Okay. I lost my place. Okay, here we go. Okay, so I think we were talking about the personnel requests. So here we see the proposed personnel changes. As discussed earlier, revenue growth has moderated from previous years, and proposed changes are based on responding to mandates and minimizing the cost to the general fund. The associate engineer position is proposed for the NPDES program and carries the heaviest burden for the general fund. Two park maintenance worker positions are proposed, which will be funded through the city's special districts. A building permit technician position is proposed, which will use funding from the vacant assistant planner position, which will be, become unfunded. One reclassification request is proposed for the Finance Department to align the work performed to the principal level position, consistent with the city's current job description. The Principal Accountant will have a lead position over the accounting and financial reporting parts of the department, like our Principal Accountant, who oversees our budget. The position will be funded by shifting salaries to the special district. The position will be funded, I'm sorry, on the part-time side, the budget proposes step increases for our part-time personnel in the Community Services Department, and the continuation of funding for a part-time management aide for the CDBG program. This position was previously funded by the ARPA grant. A portion of the cost will be funded by CDBG, with a net cost to the general fund of approximately $20,600. No personnel requests were proposed for fiscal year '26-'27. The plan is to monitor how revenues are shaping up for year one, and consider new requests as part of the mid-cycle review. With the three new positions proposed, the city's full-time equivalent account goes from $333.5 to $336.5. Here on the left is a summary of the proposed changes to the departmental operating and maintenance budgets. The most significant increase is accounting for the effects of the labor agreements covering fiscal years '24-'25 through '26-'27. The impacts amount to $4.7 million citywide for fiscal year '25-'26. That figure includes the MOU costs, but also includes merit increases, changes in purse costs, and other labor-related costs. Estimated increases in the city's general liability and workers' compensation costs are forecasted to increase by over $460,000 in both years of the budget. Building lease costs are scheduled to increase $85,000 in fiscal year '25-'26, and then another $139,000 in fiscal year '26-'27. The budget also includes $70,000 for the replacement of the city's phone system, hardware and software, as well as an additional $41,000 in costs for software to deal with vendor procurement, social media management, and scheduling for the Park Rangers. On the right, we see the proposed capital outlay expenditures. On vehicle replacements, we are proposing eight PD patrol vehicles, one patrol motorcycle, one detective vehicle, one park ranger truck, one Public Works truck, and one vacuum trailer. Another eight patrol vehicles are also proposed for fiscal year '26-'27. Funding for the vehicle comes from a combination of the Public Safety and General Government Development Impact Fees Fund, the AQMD Fund, and the Fleet Fund. In addition to the vehicles, the proposed budget also includes two utility trailers and vehicle lifts for the Fleet Department operations. The PD drone program is budgeted to expand with the acquisition of two drones, computer equipment, and software. Lastly, is a proposal to install a badge reader access at the community service buildings. Another item worth mentioning is the contribution to the LLMD-89-1 Zone 3 and Zone 38. The contribution comes from the general fund and is budgeted for $135,000 in year one and $100,000 in year two. Revenues in the LLMDs and CSAs generally do not adjust over time, so it will become increasingly difficult to fit operating costs, which escalate, into a revenue budget that does not. In the CIP portion of the workshop, we will see one proposal to complete a turf retrofit project to reduce the need for water in these districts, and this will help, but it should also be understood that this issue will persist. As long as revenues remain constant, costs continue to rise, and levels of service levels are maintained.
Oh, Director Hickey, I have a question back on that previous slide, and this may be for anyone on staff. I saw this presentation prior, but it just stuck out to me now, citywide social media management. Don't we have a department that puts out our social media, and why is there a recommendation to have a management company do it? Am I interpreting that correctly?
Yeah, and the staff can join me or correct me, but my understanding is, and we do have a communications team that is very active in social media, this is the cost for software that allows them to manage those posts. So I think it helps them to integrate all of the different platforms together, to be able to get a message out, you know, to all platforms on the schedule that they can maintain. It provides the data, feedback in terms of views, those sorts of things. And so it's not hiring a management company, for sure.
Okay.
It's just the cost of the software. And the $41,000 is not the cost for just the citywide social media account, it's all of those softwares together.
Okay, thanks. So these are just tools to empower our employees?
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
So here we see the total citywide budget with a graphic representing all city functions, regardless of their funding source. The total citywide budget of $186.8 million includes $44.5 million in CFD bond proceeds planned to be dispersed over the course of year one. Excluding this amount, the citywide budget totals $142.3 million. Here we see the total citywide budget for '26-'27, the total citywide budget amount of $148.5 million. There is $148.5 million when you exclude the $27.6 million anticipated in CFD bond There is $148.5 million when you exclude the $27.6 million anticipated in CFD bond disbursements. So that, that concludes my portion of the workshop. I'm, I'm happy to take any questions on this portion. Otherwise, I'll, I'll turn it over to Director of Public Works, Nick Fidler, to talk about this CIP portion of the program.
Okay, thank you, Director Hickey. Councilman Dynas.
Thank you. Since we're on the budget, we'll just, I mean, get those questions out of the way. I know what, three years ago or something like that, you've brought forward the 10-year budget forecast. And so I was wondering how closely that tracked to what we're seeing today in this budget? Whether, and how does the next 10 years look? Did you have to make any, you know, major significant changes to your assumptions?
Well, we, we talked about it a little bit in early April when we started with the CIP workshop, that really given the uncertainty around the city's revenues, we, we are really looking shorter term. Really, we're looking like two years out. And so we do have our, our 10-year model still updated. I, I don't have an accounting of, say, the first two years, how that compares to that. We, we can work on that kind of an analysis. But we found that there are just so many uncertainties with our revenues to try to even project out 10 years was, was not going to be a fruitful exercise for us.
Have you considered doing, just doing a five-year forecast? Just to give us to the next couple to project what at least the next one or two fiscal years will look like?
Yeah, I think, I think we can do that.
Okay, I'm just, that was just a question I had, just out of my curiosity.
Yeah, that, that is a part of our, the budget document we have. We'll have the, the updated forecasted numbers in there.
Excellent. On your, on slide five, you have the quality of life, just under 1.2 million for 25, 26, and $125,000 for 26, 27. Is that due to less revenue coming in from there? Or you-
I'm sure, I'm sorry, what figures are you referencing?
You have, for 25, 26, you're showing one point, almost 1.2 million for quality of life?
Correct.
And just $125,000.
Well, because we have essentially, maybe I can skip forward to the-
Or if you're gonna talk, if you're gonna talk about later-
No, no.
I don't want to steal all Nick's thunder here.
No, no, I, I think it's, it's a relevant question that those, those funds are specifically for the CIP contributions, but I think if we can go to the, a slide that has the, the table format, I think we can see it a bit easier. I'm sure IT could probably get us there quicker, but it's like in the next slide. Okay, here it is. Okay, so if we're looking at the, sort of that third column over, down towards the bottom of that first blue table, we see the capital outlays at 1.8, 1186 million in the first year, and then a couple columns over, you see that $125,000. So then slightly below that is the reserves that we're proposing as part of the budget, which is the 1.2 million. So really, in terms of looking at the, if we go back one slide here, in terms of what we talked to the Measure DD Committee about and what the proposal is, is really setting aside 2.5 million out of the Measure DD balances. 1.186 million for appropriations for projects that are ongoing or about to start, and then another, another 1.2 million to be set aside for that McCall I-215 interchange project. And so that, the use of those funds really sort of depletes the balance in Measure DD, which really is the city's approach, is to use all of the funds that we collect as they come in. And so then that, we did leave $125,000 to, to use in year two of the budget, but as I was talking about earlier, we do anticipate there to be an increase in that Measure DD fund balance that we would come back to the council and to the Measure DD Committee to get input about the potential use of those balances once, once we know what those numbers are. But again, it's going to be probably close to $3 million.
Okay. My final question here is on the subsidies for the LLMDs. Is, has that been ongoing for, for a while? And has it been increasing over time?
It, it's, it is, it has increased. It has gone on. I think we had brought it forward with mid-year, or we did bring it forward either last mid-year or mid-cycle was where it, it became apparent. There, we saw really dramatic increases in the cost of water, I think electricity also. And so part of it also was our tree trimming cycle, and that sort of ate into the budget available for the water and electricity. And so we've worked closely with community services in terms of putting this budget together to really minimize as much as possible the level of services. I, I think, and community services could, could speak more to it, but I think we've really tried to minimize the amount of the tree trimming that we'll be doing to keep the costs down. And then also, as I mentioned, Nick, we'll be talking about one of the proposals for reallocating the, the money from the Bailey Road project is to allocate some funding to a retrofit, retrofit project, which will hopefully decrease the demand for water within those districts.
Okay, that was my second question. What can we do to try to reduce the-
Yeah, but as, as I mentioned, I think over time, the, these revenues are really fixed in time. So if we're talking five years, 10 years down the road, I mean, even if we had no water, there's still going to be some costs that will eventually catch up to those revenues. And so, so that will be a question the council will have to face in terms of what level of service for those districts.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Director Hickey, back to that on slide 16. You mentioned the 2.5 across two years with 1.2 going to McCall. Did I miss where the other 1.3 is going?
The 1.1 is, it's close to 1.2, is going to the, a, a list of projects that will be discussed as part of the, the CIP part of the budget.
Okay, thanks. Got it. I'll, I'll hold back. Counsel, any other questions on the operating budget? Hearing none. Thank you, Director Hickey.
Thank you. And as I mentioned, Director of Public Works, Nick Fidler, will come up and talk about the CIP part of the project.
Thank you. Good evening, Director Fidler.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor and City Council Members. Nick Fidler, Public Works Director, will be presenting the updates to our CIP. So, gotta give me a second while I get to that slide. Sorry, a little slow. All right, there we go. So we last met in April 16th, went over our proposed CIP program. This is an update based off some of the discussions that occurred on that time. And then also, as Mr. Hickey had mentioned, we met with the Measure DD Committee, Quality Life Committee as well. So we'll do a summary of the proposed CIP projects, summary updates for CIP, and then detailed listing of proposed projects by project category. So this slide is very similar to what you saw on April 16th. The biggest change is in fiscal year 25, 26. Originally, that first col, or the second column where we have the 13.1, almost 13.2 million, that was originally 16.8 million at our April 16th meeting. Some of that was due to, we separated out, if you'll see the line below, we separated out $1.2 million for the reserve. That was up in our transportation program. And then we also removed the Bailey Boulevard improvements, which was about 2.5 million. And then if you look at public facilities, we added $100,000 to, to that area. So we're roughly about dropped to 3-point-something million anyways. The 26, 27 did not change. This is consistent with what you saw on April 16th. And then moving down to the table below that, we have 1.2 million that we're putting in reserve for the McCall Boulevard and I-215 interchange, as Mr. Hickey had indicated. And then also, we're committing the 3.9 million for the Rockport Ranch mitigation for the future community center, totaling 5.1 million in reserve. And then we're proposing reprogramming of some of the Bailey Park Boulevard, Bailey Boulevard widening to the pavement management program of 1.2 million, which we'll share in a future slides. So we're looking at addition of one public facility project, the Case and Snero Center Roof Rehabilitation. That is a CDBG-funded project. That's something that you'll be seeing on your consent calendar later tonight, or, or not as the consent calendar, as part of the agenda for tonight. And then we're committed the reserves, as mentioned before, the 3.9 million towards the future community center. And then we're reviewing existing fund reprogramming of, and recommendations of the above-ground fuel station that was originally for the police state, future police station, and that's taking $192,000 to a LLMD turf conversion project. And then lastly, looking at reprogramming the funds that were already programmed for the Bailey Park, Bailey Boulevard widening project. We're looking at 300, or $422.5,000 for fiscal year 25, 26, AC resurfacing out of the quality of life, which Mr. Hickey had mentioned, that was taken to the quality of life just for verification of that funding. And then another $809,000 from Measure A funds, and that will be proposed to be programmed towards our pavement management program. And then there was some discussion at our last council meeting on April 16th in regards to the utilization, some of the general funds for future sports lighting, one being at E.L. Peterson Park, another being at Hidden Hills. And then we talked about utilizing some of the funding, the general funding for the Banner Park playground equipment. We do, that project was a little bit underfunded from some of the community financing district bond premiums. And then lastly, the $50,000 for turf conversion as well. And the, the ones on the right, so these were some of the recommendations for the, the, the field lighting and the LMDs were from the Parks and Recreation Trails Committee. That was on May 1st.
Director Fidler, those two recommendations for turf conversion, where are those locations?
I would have to ask Bryce, please.
Hey, good evening, Mr. Howell.
Good evening. So that's Zone 3. It's actually in multiple locations throughout the city. So it's in different districts of the city, Zone 3 is. So that's LMD Zone 3, but it's not just one location, so it's actually multiple locations.
Okay. And so maybe I'll follow up in the future and ask more specifics?
Yeah.
And I'll follow up.
Yeah, there's, there's up to 27 locations in that, so yeah.
Oh, okay. Sorry to put you on the spot.
If you want, yeah.
All right, thank you, Mr. Howell.
All right. So CIP programming projects listings, this is again what we went through at our last April 16th meeting, looking towards 500, in fiscal year 25, 26, $500,000 for the McCall Boulevard interchange, $500,000 for the Scott Road Bundy Canyon, McCall Boulevard widening, $300,000, Holland Road widening, $573,000, and the Guest Road Vista Way Traffic Signal, $400,000. And then Evans Road, Craig Road, $600,000. And then in 26, 27, we're $400,000 for the Minifee Road widening. Again, probably won't go through all these, there's a lot of numbers there. Give you a second to read through them, but 25, 26, similar to what, for these categories, these haven't changed from our April 16th meeting. They're, they're the same. And then again, the, these haven't changed as well. So for the reserves and prior funding reprogramming recommendations, we have the, again, the reserve placing the $1.2 million into the McCall Boulevard I-215 interchange, and then the 3.9 million for the new community center, Recreation Center. And then the, the reprogramming of the $2,341,000 for the Bailey Park Boulevard, that would be unfunding that project, and then unfunding the $192,000, $92,000, $68,000 for the above-ground fuel station. And then funding 25, for fiscal year 25, 26, local road AC resurfacing, that would be on Antelope from Newport Road to Alder Gate. We are, currently have a project in the current fiscal year to pave Antelope from around Craig Avenue all the way up to Newport. This would complete that, that next segment along Antelope Road. And along with that project, we'll also bring in some of the complete street elements, like bringing bike, bike lanes and restriping the roadway. So before I go on to this next slide, is there any questions that you would have for the presentation?
Councilman Diedrich.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Fidler, so in regard to the PMP, are there, I know we're adding some AC resurfacing programs because of funds, and are there other roads, other areas of the city that you feel need to be a part of our CIP budget that we have not yet addressed?
Going back to our, our last meeting, we did say that obviously our, our program is underfunded, and that's why we're recommending a reprogramming these funds towards resurfacing. So in order to maintain a higher level of 70 pavement condition index. So there are areas in the city that we could generate additional projects based off of their priority list for, from the pavement management system. We would look towards what are the next roadways that are on that, that list for either resurfacing or rehabilitation? Because we, we want to do a little bit of both. You want to do a little bit of pavement maintenance and preservation.
And so do we know if, like, for example, the next project or whatever that would come into that, do we know what level, what level it's at or no? Because you were saying-
I don't have that table offhand, sorry.
Yeah, just trying to figure out, like, how far behind are we, right? And do we need to seriously consider addressing, getting more funds to that, to address that or not?
I, I think we were looking at, we would, we'd need about 6 million per, per year. Yeah, we have about $20 million in backlog on pay-
And so what would that get us to? The 6 million per year or the 20 million total? What level would that get us to if we did that?
That, that's to maintain, right now we have a, we had a 77 PCI, so to continue to, to keep that and growing and, and keep moving it up higher on the categories.
So do you have serious concerns about where we're at with this?
It, it is challenging. It, it does help- It does help to produce more pavement rehabilitation. Our challenge is that we have to heavily coordinate with what is developing in our community as well, because we have so much development that's occurring. And it also repairs some of our roadways. So we have to really coordinate where we see future development coming to ensure that we're not doing something that's going to get tore out through development that would be putting in infrastructure or something like that. But it is, I mean, it would be nice to have more funds, obviously, to continue our pavement of areas that are built out and maintain them. But there's some areas that aren't completely built out that we have to look at what's in the forecasted development.
Sound good, thank you. Going forward in the future, I would like to try to be more aggressive to funding.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
Councilman Dynas.
Thank you. Yes, I appreciate the park commissioners recommending or reviewing, recommending the parks, put some lights in. With summertime coming up, I'm sure they'll be appreciated to enjoy the parks at the evening. That is reimbursed by sports teams or something? Or they just come on at night and stay on at night? What's the game plan for that?
I'll let Mariana help answer that question.
Hi there. Good afternoon, Mariana Mitchell, Community Services Director. And our sports field lighting is available to our youth sports leagues who utilize for a fee. So that fee does cover minimal cost, minimal cost of the use of the lights. I think right now it's at $5 an hour. And so it covers some of the fees, but it's not covering the total usage of the fees because our primary goal is to get youth sports programs on our fields.
Okay. My other question I has, had is, we got away, unfunded the fuel station above ground. I know that was for the PD. Was there an alternative that came up or we just decided it wasn't needed anymore?
We've, Councilmember Dynas, we've looked at that issue quite a bit. We have looked at the places to place the tanks so it wouldn't be put somewhere and then have to be relocated in the future. We determined that we'd be best to try to place that when we go to the ultimate design for the PD, new PD station or department headquarters or the Maintenance Operations Center. So those are still a few years out. So we felt, I think a lot of the councils' desires are to have money that's tied up on something, be put to use until it can be used. So that was kind of the thought is, it's a couple, you know, two to three years out till we can determine the best placement of that facility before we were able to actually locate it. We did not want to put it at the current Police Department Headquarters because, one, it doesn't have the footprint available for it and, two, that we don't own that property. So if we were to put it in a future location, it would be at the potential site on Bradley and Cherry Hills. But we really haven't determined what that layout is. So we didn't want to plop this big of a piece of infrastructure until we really determine the footprint of the buildings, the circulation of the traffic. And if we did that, it would confine us to have to work around it.
Okay, because I know, as I recall, when we had the conversation about this, part of it was in case of a disaster, they'd be able to fuel their emergency vehicles. So hopefully we'll come up with some kind of a temporary solution for in case we do have a disaster. But understand not wanting to throw away good money on, it's not something you can pick up and throw in the back of a moving van and take with you. So thanks for the answer.
Thanks.
Mayor Protem Carwin.
Thank you. A question for you, Mr. Fidler, and then a question for Mr. Hickey. With, piggybacking on what Councilmember Diedrich was asking, I recall that we were engaged in a pavement evaluation citywide. Is that done?
It's not 100% done, but it's substantially complete. I think staff is reviewing it now. End of the month, it'll be complete.
So say the first meeting of next month, will we be able to get that report?
The June 16th meeting?
Right.
Yeah, we should be able to have that.
And because Councilmember Diedrich, I don't know if you've seen this report before, but they go through every road in the city and they rate every single road on an index, that pavement condition index. So your question would be answered by that report, which is, hey, here's the roads that are in the most distress in order by ranking of top to bottom the entire city. And I was just curious what the state of that was. So that's coming next month.
Yeah, we've got a copy of it. We're still reading through it and on top of what-
The data collection is complete. We're just creating the report.
Yes, correct, thank you.
Got it. And Mr. Hickey, I had a question for you. We had talked, I think at the last, either the last workshop or one of our previous council meeting, we had talked about bringing in somebody to clean up our website, like a dedicated website manager. In the personnel listing and the requests and all that other stuff, I didn't see anything in the budget for that. Has that something that's been considered? Because our website is a disaster. It's so, and it's, but it's a disaster for a good reason. I want to make sure I make that clear, because it's just bursting with information. But people keep adding to it inconsistently. And I think it would take a dedicated personnel member to go through the whole thing with a consistent view and make everything cohesive and make sense of it. So what's going on with that?
Well, you know, as we talked about, it's really a tight year. There were a number of personnel requests that were not brought forward as part of the proposed budget tonight. And so my understanding is that we will manage the website updating through our own personnel staff, along with the consulting dollars that I believe were approved as part of the mid-cycle update. So we do have a consultant helping us to do that. But it is not our recommendation at this point to bring on a full-time personnel.
Is the consultant, have they started yet?
I would need to defer to our IT department in terms of the-
We don't get to hear from the Sarkisian a lot, so.
Good afternoon. Michelle Sarkisian, interim Chief Information Officer. As regarding to our website ADA compliance project, we do have our consultants that have engaged on our website for months now. We are actually on schedule for that project for ADA completion by the end of this month. Next phase of the project will actually be training staff members in our organization on ADA compliance awareness. And to your point, to ensure that we're, as we're updating our website, we're making the right conscious ADA changes. So meaning if one department's uploading a photo, they're ensuring that the metadata behind it or any image that is considered decorative is indeed checked as a decorative image versus something that needs to be, I would say, described on the image as far as it being an image of like a park or a person.
Well, my inquiry was more navigation ability rather than ADA compliance. So are you saying we don't, we have the staff? And is that consultant going through non-ADA accessibility? Like just the functionality of the website and the consistency and all of that? Cleaning up dead links, all of those kinds of things?
Correct, yes. They were hired to help with our ADA compliance. Next step, once that project is completed, we will actually, we will be refocusing internal staff, as you said, resources to actually move forward with the next step, which is a redesign of our website, since we are indeed scheduled for that.
So that project and the necessary personnel is included in this two-year budget that's being presented to us?
That is correct, yes.
Okay, that's all I needed to know, thank you. I still want to get hit with a request next year going, it turns out, we need a web manager for $192,000.
Oh, thank you for keeping an eye on that. I had one more question about, I didn't get clarification yet. The 2.5 million spread out for the CIP projects? I'm interested, so 1.2 million is going to McCall and the other 1.3 was going where? And I'm interested if those are the recommendations from our Measure DD committee?
We just want to make clarification. You're talking about the refunding, reprogramming of the Bailey Boulevard, Bailey Boulevard project?
No. So on Slide 16, it says 2.5 million spread across the two years with 1.2 going to McCall.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so the 2.5 million is, includes the 1.2 million going to McCall. In addition to that, we have 400,000 for the traffic signal. This is at Getz Road and Vista Way, traffic signal, 400,000.
Okay, so that's not just being paid by the CSA 86. Okay, that's also Measure DD. Okay, thank you.
Then we have the Evans Road and Craig Avenue traffic signal at $600,000.
Okay.
We have the citywide guardrail improvements. This is the matching funds at $111,080. Then we have the edge line striping improvements at $38,580. Then we have the pedestrian crossing improvements at $37,300, so.
Okay, there it is. So yeah, that puts together about the 1.3. Now, my next question, are these recommendations coming from our Measure DD committee?
Correct.
Okay. I just want to get a feel for what they're thinking and how they're meeting wins.
In fact, I'm looking at them from the agenda report that we took to Measure DD.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I definitely want to have an understanding for how the rest of the team thinks.
And to be clear, the 2.5 that we're talking about, the numbers I just gave you total just under 2.4 million. And then on top of that is 125,000, which is for the Garbani Road drainage improvements, which is budgeted for 2627. So it all kind of shows up in the first year with 125 carrying over to the second year.
Excellent, yeah, thank you for those details. I don't see any other council members in the queue for questions. So Madam Clerk, are there any requests to speak or has any correspondence been received?
No correspondence, but we do have a public speaker.
Okay, please call the public speaker.
Mr. David Faust.
Good evening, Mr. Faust.
Good evening, Mayor and Council and city staff. I just wanted to take just a moment to express gratitude on behalf of the Parks Recreation Trails Commission for the opportunity to review that existing fund reprogramming allocation and be able to make some recommendations. We appreciate that very much. I know funds are needed in a lot of different things in the city. But using approximately half of the Bailey Boulevard widening project to, for sports lighting at Peterson Park and Hidden Hills Park and completing the funding for the playground at Banner Village are all wonderful projects that will yield immediate benefit to our citizens. Especially, we hear a lot on field allocation and the lack of fields across the city. I do, so we do appreciate being able to make that recommendation to council tonight. And I appreciate staff and their quick work and getting those recommendations to, into the budget review process as well. I also want to speak in support of the proposed two FTEs for park maintenance workers as well. Our parks are very visible here in the city and providing maintenance for our growing city and the growing number of parks that we have is critical. Also appreciate the recommendation and would support the capital outlay for a new park ranger truck as well for community services. And finally, I just, I appreciate staff's recommendation and your consideration of the allocation of 3.9 million to the community center project. We know we've spent a lot of time, combined as a council and in a PRTC, on reviewing the design. And I know funds are, again, are precious, but I appreciate the consideration of allocating funds towards this critical project that will benefit our entire community. And that's all I had to say, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Faust. Okay, council, we have gone through the questions and public comment. This is our time to discuss or share any comments on our behalf.
Mr. Mayor, if I might just interject one point.
Of course, yes.
The recommendations that were brought forward from the Parks and Recreation to the Trails Commission, those are, we're not adding those to the CIP program. These are reprogramming funds, so those funds are already appropriated. So I think Public Works is working with community services to sort of vet those projects and make sure, you know, everything is ready to go with those. So the budget that we're looking to bring back in June won't include those projects. Those will be brought forward when they're ready to bring forward. But that's, I think, what our recommendation is.
Okay, thank you, Director Hickey. Council.
I'll just say, I appreciate staff's work and management that I know we're coming up to some rough weather here when it comes to the economy. And I know how tough it is to try to keep a balanced budget, maintain services at the level we are and still have a balanced budget. It, there's a lot of late nights and a lot of, you know, going through a lot of paper through the printer, trying to figure out what the right one is. And so I'm very comfortable that this will sustain us through this time and continue to provide the services that our residents expect and have been getting already. So I fully support this.
Councilman Temple.
So I want to echo that. I think that, you know, at the beginning of this presentation, it was noted that the revenue of our city only grew by 4%, which was significantly lower than previous year, through no fault of our own. And I want to commend Finance Department, the city staff, the heads, the city management for completing a balanced budget without cutting any services or cutting any other aspects of city management. I think that's commendable, especially given that in our region, we have cities that are contemplating and having to do that because they didn't plan to be fiscally conservative. So we maintain reserves in spite of the slower growth. We've done, the city's done an excellent job. So I just want to commend staff and heads of departments for doing that, for having an excellent budget while maintaining services. So thank you for that.
Mayor Protem Carwin.
You know, I've read that when it comes to government, there's three levels. There's the things you need to do as the government, things you'd like to do as the government, and things that would be nice to do as the government. And I appreciate that this budget is balanced. I understand that there's a lot of projects we need to get to, that if we had the money, we could do it. I know we've got this 40% reserve fund, but I am thankful that we are not dipping into that to do some of these things. They're not an emergency. Yes, there are some roads that need patches. Yes, there are some roads that need to be repaired, but they're not in emergency condition that vehicles can't get through. And while we weather this storm, I appreciate the fiscal responsibility of our Finance Department in maintaining that in case an actual emergency does arrive. We're prepared for that. And we'll eventually get these revenues back up, hopefully through the stewardship of this council and economic development and those kinds of things, we'll get these revenues back up. And we can do down to the next level, from the things we have to do to the things we'd like to do. And I see maybe, hopefully, that'll happen in '28. So I just wanted to say, I'm thankful that this budget is balanced and I'm thankful for the conservative approach to maintaining our ability to weather an emergency should one arrive.
Thank you to all of you in this room. I appreciate all of your hard work. I know all of you sacrifice time away from home with your family and friends and you put in extra hours and it really means a lot, not just to me, but to the biggest city in Southwest Riverside County. We have a lot to be proud of and it goes, the credit goes to you for making it work and putting in the efforts you put in. Thank you so much. And we're, I'm very proud also because you're able to recognize in a tight budget, some, some may call it wasteful spending or others may call it, you know, spending where we want to just make sure we're not putting it in the right, wrong spots, like Bailey Road and the above-ground fuel station. And with that money, we're giving our residents immediate wins. We're giving the kids parks to participate in. We're fixing roads that need to be fixed, even during a tight year. So thank you for all of your hard work and we're still delivering wins, immediate wins for our residents. And God bless all of you, thank you so much. Okay, seeing no more comments in the queue, I will adjourn this meeting- Okay, seeing no more comments in the queue, I will adjourn this meeting at 5:07. Thank you.